It's six thirty in Reed Field, Maine. Please stand and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and thank you to everyone who is joining us in person and online tonight. As I often do, I want to remind our members here up in front of the microphones to speak clearly and loudly so that we have great audio for the recording. This is the regular Reed Field Select Board meeting for November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. We would move now to five minutes for approval of minutes and warrants. I would take a motion to approve the minutes if there are no issues.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the last meeting.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes for the minutes from our last meeting. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Just want to say thank you very much, Angelica, for that. Your continued work on those things are fantastic. Item twenty-three zero forty-eight or warrant seventeen through twenty. I believe Mr. DeAngelis will lead us through the review of those warrants.
It's, once again, not super exciting. Teresa does too good a job to make it exciting. I think probably the big one for warrants seventeen and eighteen, which goes from thirteenth October through the twenty-seventh, is county tax assessment. We do that once a year. And so that was three hundred and fifty-two thousand and thirty-one dollars out of the total warrant of four hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight oh-two. So that was the big one. Everything else is, you know, pretty Monday stuff. Payroll, some stuff for tech support in various ways, and that's a story. Do you have any questions, anybody?
I have one.
I'm ready.
Maine Municipal, verse eleven, six fifty-one. Is that yearly dues?
I'd have to check. Take a look at that.
Sorry.
No, no, it's fine.
Don't be sorry.
I believe that is.
That's what I remember seeing, but, yeah, that's what I remember seeing, but you know, I could be wrong.
I didn't know if it was semi or the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's see here.
And that county bill is what we have no control over when we issue the town budget.
Exactly, and so, and that's it for the year. We do that once a year.
And that includes our protection line for the sheriff.
I'm getting there.
I'm okay with that answer whenever you find it.
Okay, I will provide it as soon as I find it. I'm trying to work backwards from the S section here.
Excellent. Shall we make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve, was it the total amount of four hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and two cents?
Correct.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept warrants seventeen and eighteen and the amount of four hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and two cents. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. We appreciate that. We now have warrants, I believe we're going to do warrants nineteen and twenty now. Lead us on, Mr. D.
There we go. So the big items, there's two big items in this one. The quarterly RSU payment, RSU thirty-eight, that was three hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. And then also our first payment for snow removal, winter snow removal, seventy-six thousand, nine hundred, and that's twenty percent of the total. And then, from what I understand, the seventy percent is spread out over the next five months, and then we pay ten percent at the end after all the mailboxes that have been run over are paid for and all that, yes. Okay, so all, not to say that there's a lot, but you know, whatever number all that has to be taken care of before we pay the last ten percent, and the total then is five hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
I have one comment to make, Eric, on the sheet in our packet. I know it's not what we're voting on, but it says that payroll was four hundred and ninety-one thousand, and I think it meant to say total.
That would make a lot more sense.
That'd be a scary payroll.
It may have been a subtotal, but anyway, that's wrong, and that's on page fourteen.
Okay, yeah, I will talk to.
I will say on, oh, yeah, I see what you're saying on that one. On fifteen, it's actually, or on the next page, page fifteen, it's correct, yes.
That's not what it says in the warrant, so, yeah, that's just, it must be.
I would make a motion to approve these warrants in the amount of five hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the warrants nineteen and twenty for the amount of five hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty cents. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much.
Before you go on.
Yes.
I do have that answer for Catherine. It is actually the first half of our property and casualty pool insurance. So this is our municipal insurance for buildings, property, things like that.
Okay.
So it's, it's the first half. The second half is due in January. Or actually, we have one in July and one in November, so we're actually, we're actually looking pretty good, so.
That's right. Excellent. If there's no more discussion about that, we move now to twenty-five minutes for communications, and we begin with select board communications. I would ask if any of the select board members have any communication or something to say. Now would be the time. Go ahead, Carol, and then Sean.
Do you want to go?
No, go ahead.
Oh, sure. So on last Friday, Veterans Day, the town had a very nice ceremony. Dennis Price was kind of the emcee or the starting speaker.
Yes, I welcomed everyone in there, yes.
Dale Price did a great job as usual. Many were served. They had a free lunch. It was just a really wonderful ceremony once again, to honor our veterans, to thank everybody for showing up and participating in that. One thing that was brought to my attention that I wanted to bring up, the animal control officer. I guess it's budgeted for like ninety-five hundred a year, but our animal control officer gets three thousand a year plus a cellphone. So I guess we're curious for one of where that big unaccounted balance is going. So they cover Mount Vernon and Reed Field. I think Mount Vernon pays the same amount, but gives them mileage. We don't give them mileage. The animal control officer is on duty twenty-four seven and gets calls up to seven times a day. I've seen the log just right here, including two AM or from the state police at six AM for all kinds of reasons. And I guess I understand, I don't know the exact number, but we've had like maybe four different control officers and control officers in the last five, six years or something. It seems like a revolving door, and maybe that demand is really something. Now, there's also mileage and very high gas cost. I asked about, hey, would it make it be appropriate for you to use the nice electric car we have out there that sits there most of the time, and they said he goes off-road a lot. In fact, he just like broke some kind of spring in his truck to the tune of five hundred dollars. I don't know if we can reimburse that, but it seems that'd be a little rough terrain for the little electric car, so it seems like there's a gap there between what's budgeted and what the animal control officer sees, so I guess I'd like that addressed at some point.
And this is Eric Johnson is the animal control officer. He lives on the Church Road. Eric, Eddie, Eddie, you need to address this now or do you want to?
Well, I can address some of the big pieces quickly. First of all, we do include in the budget the payments that are made to the animal shelter, which is a large part of our expenses, so the stipend is just that. It's a stipend. It's not intended to be wages. It's essentially reimbursement for what is, you know, in part a volunteer type position. You're paid for the time on a lump sum basis, and mileage is included with that. And so that's always been the case since Eric has started and a little bit before then. At one point, it was part of a regular position for a full-time employee, and that's why we've had some transition, because we've had transitioned to full-time employees. So I don't think that it would be really fair to characterize it as a revolving door. It's just we have staff changes. And one of the things that we were looking at by having this be a stipend position that wasn't with a, associated with a full-time staff was basically trying to minimize the cost of overtime on a regular basis, and that was a discussion we have with the Budget Committee a few years back, but also to help try to maintain some of that stability and have different people doing different jobs, so you don't have all of your eggs in one basket. So, and Eric has brought this up to me a few times, but apparently wasn't satisfied with my answer, so we can talk about it during the budget process more.
Can I just ask how much we pay to the animal shelter?
I think it's like six, seven thousand dollars. Yeah, it's a sizable amount, because they do most of the work. They.
Most of the work on our animal?
Yeah, they have to house the animals and feed them and take care of them.
So I know if we find one, we drop it off there, but we're.
It's a, it's an amount that's apportioned out to every town that uses the animal shelter, correct, Eric?
That's correct, yes.
So each town has a share that they pay based on population, I think, is how it's determined.
Yeah, there's some formula, and we just, we pay our, our share.
But it's thousands. It's not just a couple hundred here, a couple hundred there. I guess I'm asking if we can consider doing mileage, because also I guess Reed Field calls are three to one to Mount Vernon, and Mount Vernon is doing mileage. At least make him flush with the price of gas.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe Mount Vernon's paying the same we are, but I'd have to check on that.
Three thousand plus mileage.
Yeah.
So if we can just. Budget process would be the time we would.
Do they also pay for the cellphone or?
Well, you don't need more than one cellphone, so I, I think we're carrying that, but I don't know. It just seems like that may be part of why it keeps being turnover. I'm just addressing it because I know Eric said he's come several times, and maybe we can discuss it during the.
The budget, yeah, the budget process definitely is the appropriate time for more in-depth discussion about that.
It's just a very demanding, part-time position that's twenty-four seven, and it turns into being very time-consuming.
And he's very busy, too, so.
He has a job.
Certainly, yeah, you know, if it's, if it gets to be too much for him, then maybe we should look for other.
Five AM, I lost my dog. Now, why wouldn't you expect him to do something? It's like, he gets the craziest calls.
Well, I'm curious to see the call log, too, because I haven't, I haven't seen that at all, so I'm glad to see it.
Thank you for having that. That's a, that's a good point, and I like that. Sean, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just gonna thank the town, really, everybody in town for a fantastic Halloween from, from the spectacular event on Saturday with the pumpkin walk and the movie. It was a lot of fun. People had a great day. I think we had about two hundred and eighty kids come through the cars. That was really great. And then on Halloween itself, everybody on Main Street, Delro, Church Road, that just gave out candy. It was, it was really awesome to have so much people out there. Thanks, it was a great day. I enjoyed it.
Awesome. Well, that's really all that matters. Anyone else? Go ahead, Catherine.
So it's that time of year again when holidays are coming upon us, and I believe it's been four years now that the Select Board has been donating part of our pay to fund employee gift baskets. And so I'll be asking each of you for a donation towards that if I could. And this year, in order to take a little of the burden off of the Select Board members, I am going to ask that we use three hundred and ninety dollars from the Select Board line that we rarely use anything from. There are thirteen employees, and we'd like to get a thirty-dollar gift card from Hanaford for each of them, so that would be three hundred and ninety dollars to put in the basket along with some treats done up so that they have some appreciation. It's, that's getting to be a little bit too much for just the five of us to do. The town manager also contributes, and we've never talked about it publicly before, so I think it's important that people know that this is something that we do because we appreciate the employees, and we're prohibited by law from giving gifts to the employees. Our only true employee is the town manager. The other employees are all under the town manager. So it's something we do to be thoughtful and considerate. So I guess I'd like to make a motion to have approval to spend three hundred and ninety, five, three hundred and ninety dollars from the Select Board line for employee gift cards.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to appropriate from the Select Board line, which has already been approved by the voters and is already there, to buy these gift cards for employees. Any further discussion on that? Excellent. All in favor? Excellent. All right, thank you. Absolutely. If that's it for the Select Board communication, I will wrap this up by telling you a quick story. When I was twelve years old.
How long ago was that?
It was a long time ago. I, my cousin Richie Shepherd told me that he was going to go play golf at a place in Blacksburg known as The Hill. The Hill was just that. It was literally a hill where they had crammed nine holes of a municipal golf course in Blacksburg into this space, and I was twelve, and that was the first time I ever swung a golf ball. And now I'm, I'm much older than twelve, but the, the special guests that we have this evening for our Select Board Communications, they are much better than I was at twelve. I just want that to be known, probably now, to be honest. But we want to welcome the Miranda Cook Golf Team and their coach, Ryan Zerf. Ryan, if you want to come on up here and talk to us and tell us, yes, you can give a little clapping. I just want to say that in the continuing goals of the Select Board to, you know, continue to foster relationships with the school and the school community and the population, we're trying to, this is something we've done before, but just to try to welcome the high school kids. Thank you, guys, for being here and ladies and gentlemen here tonight, and we just really appreciate you, you bringing in and taking a time to celebrate your state championship. Tell us a little bit about the team and your season in review.
Sure. Do you guys want to stand up?
Yes, please, yeah. There you go. Hey, all right, yeah.
Just a portion of the team. In total, there were fourteen team members. We're lucky enough to be able to play out of the Augusta Country Club, have been for years. I just want to say thank you to them, too. When I first started, eighteen-something years ago, I started helping out our coaching golf team. We actually had to travel over to Turner to take a bus every day after practice, and then years after that, we got permission to go over and play the country club, which is great, so that's a real benefit to us. It's within the district, and it's also a lot of the players here are members or work out of there as well. And I say that because access is really important to the golf course. You need to be able to play. You need to be able to practice. You need to do a lot of stuff that doesn't fit into the practice time after school, and this group here does that. I mean, for those of you who might have been out to the golf course, I'm out at the golf course a fair amount. A lot of these players are on the range all the time. They're playing all the time. They're doing it over the summer when I'm not there coaching, but I can see that they're working on it, and golf is one of those things. It's an individual game, but it leads into team events, obviously, by winning the state championship, and it's really hard to quantify how hard that is because you need to focus on yourself, but you also need to focus on the betterment of the team. In this group here, it's, you know, one of the best teams I've ever coached. From a camaraderie standpoint, you could tell from day one, they really like each other. They want to root for each other. They also want to give each other a hard time respectfully so that it pushes everyone, and that was noticeable for day one. And it's a buildup, too, so golf, for anyone who plays it, is a lot of patience. It's a lot of frustration, but it's a lot of celebration, too, and we got to celebrate with the state title this year, which is a real testament to how they have worked together as a group, but also worked individually to get ready for that so that they could deal with the adversity that happens through eighteen holes. They do eighteen holes for the state tournament. It's a long day, five, five and a half hours. You have bad holes, you have good holes. You see that people you're playing against have bad holes or good holes, and you need to work through it, and they did great this year. We return all of them again next year. They should be really proud of themselves. All of them made individuals for states. We had three that made all conference, and then we had Wyatt, who also made New England, so a real good group, and again, one of the best teams that I've coached. They really enjoy each other's company, and I was really happy to be part of it.
Well, they must have a good leader as well, Ryan, so thank you for your time doing that as well. Anyone? Congratulations. We thank you very much for sharing your success with us here at the Select Board meeting. We hope that you'll tune in or one day be involved in your town some way or another. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you very much.
As, as I will also extend to you, there are no hard feelings. If you are all finished and done, you can certainly stay. It's, the wheels of government are always interesting, so.
But you are free to go if you would like to go to other things.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, there we go. That's it. Congratulations. Yeah, and there they go, the deluge, the exodus. Congratulations. Thank you. Yeah, that's it. Thank you. That's it. Absolutely, guys. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks.
Thanks, guys. Excellent.
Here, right.
I would like to finish out communications with our staff reports, then our minutes, and then our public communication. Eric, do you want to go ahead and do your town manager report?
Yes, sir. Here we go. All right, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, administration and personnel. The election was an operational success. I don't like to talk about the outcomes as they relate to any particular candidate, but the the flow and function of that event was fantastic in large part because of the dedication of our clerk, deputy clerk, warden, maintenance staff, the Kinsale School, who has agreed again, let us host our elections there, and many election staff who contribute, and there's a few here tonight, Greg Durgan, Karen Peterson. And I just want to thank everybody who participated in making that a wonderful, clean, smooth election, and everybody who voted, too. Thanks for that. I want to thank also Chris Cassiani for his hard work with the maintenance crew this spring and summer. I'm looking forward to seeing him come back. He was one of our seasonal employees, and he did a fantastic job for us and was just great to work with, so we're looking forward to him getting back here when he's done with Florida. We are planning a staff meeting for mid-December, likely the fifteenth, and that's where we do some annual trainings and also take care of administrative matters through the course of the usually every six months or so. The town office will be open from eight AM to noon the day before Thanksgiving and close on Thanksgiving Day and the day after, so that's Wednesday, eight to noon, we're open, and then we're closed Thursday, Friday. The transfer station will be closed Thanksgiving Day and the day after, so they're closed Thursday, Friday, but they're open Saturday as usual. I have continued my research into text-based messaging software for the town. I've got a couple of good options that we're, I'm looking at. One is an independent standalone messaging system, and the other is one that can be integrated with our current website, which I think is probably the best option, but I need a little, little bit more work on that, and I think we'll build a, have a text-based solution in place for the, for the new year, with, with luck. Moving on to roads, traffic, parking, and safety. Roadside mowing is complete for the year. Gravel road grading has been scheduled, cushion construction. Truck inspections were completed for Scott Horn Construction. That's why he got that check that was referenced in the in the financial report from Steve. We have all of the sand and the salt material we need on hand. All the contract conditions that were required to be met at this time of year have been met, and I'm looking forward to working with Scott. He's been very easy so far. He's been very supportive of having the GPS tracking, data tracking units in the trucks, and so those will be in hopefully by the end of the month here, and we can start recording data to help us with our, our long-term planning, but also helping him to have a better idea of what his fleet's doing. And in general, I just wanted to say that I'm really comfortable with where we are in preparing for the winter road maintenance. It's a big consideration. It's a big expense for the community. We take it seriously, and I think that we're in a good spot. I did negotiate with Goral Palmer, who's the engineering firm managing the planning process for the Church Road sidewalk, and was able to drop the price by about four thousand dollars while at the same time adding three more public meetings and prioritizing that public engagement process, making it happen sooner in the schedule and making it happen more frequently. So I think that's a really good outcome, and we'll be starting with that in earnest, probably January. Roadwork RFPs have not yet been issued, and we do need to get those out so we can guarantee spring work. Primarily ditching, pre-work, and culvert work, and we are working on getting a pre-work quote from Taylor Stevenson, who's done a lot of work for us in the past and does, does good work. Transfer station, I'm pleased to have both Karen and Mike back at the transfer station on a regular basis. We had a lot of kind of alternating time off there for a while, and it's good to have folks back in on a consistent basis, so that's a positive direction. We had a very productive solid waste and recycling committee meeting in October. That's a committee that helps direct the operations of the transfer station, and one of the big things that we're focusing on is trying to re-energize our composting program that we have at the transfer station in addition to the fee schedule adjustments that we'll talk about later in the agenda tonight, but that food composting program, we do have it. It runs all winter. You can compost at home or you can compost at the facility. We try to be flexible in encouraging both of those options. Moving on to special project updates, we are under contract with Acxiom GIS to process our parcel map updates to assist with revaluation, and that's something the board had authorized last, last meeting, and I wanted to report out the comprehensive plan process is moving forward, and we are getting pretty good survey results so far. We've got close to sixty online surveys returned and about fifty of the paper surveys. I'm going to put a pitch in. If you haven't taken the online survey yet, please do. It takes about half an hour, twenty-five minutes, but it really does give residents opportunity to put, to give feedback to the, to the town, the Select Board, the plant committee, to me as the manager, to help understand what people's priorities are and how we can shape the budget and policy to help achieve and meet those, those goals. It's a really easy survey. Go to the Reed Field website. We also have one that's specific for business owners, so we have three of those so far from business owners, but I'd like to get, you know, a dozen at least. We have scores of home-based occupations and businesses in town. So go to the website, take the survey, and we really appreciate it. It's a great way to give direction to the town, and that is my town manager's report, Dennis.
Excellent. Any questions? Go ahead, Carol.
So we talked about sending that survey to the homes. Have we decided not to do that?
Nope, we just haven't gotten to that point yet. And what we would be doing is sending out a postcard, not the actual full survey, but yes, we have to get that out through every door, direct mail.
Postcard that does what?
Directs people to the website.
But if they don't have a computer, that's the problem. A lot of seniors may not have access to that.
I guess it would also include the option of taking the paper survey, which is shorter, but still valuable.
But how do they get the paper survey? It's that access to it that seems to be the problem with, like, seniors who is a big part of our town, and we want to make sure they have time to be able to.
I think if you put on there, just call the town office, we can mail them a survey.
Yeah, we can do that, too. Yeah, yeah. No, we'll find a way to make sure that people have access. I mean, we included it in the messenger as well, which is also available in hard copy to seniors.
So we're paying for a postcard to everybody, but not the survey?
Yeah, it's a difference of about four thousand dollars. It's, it's a huge difference in mailing costs. But we certainly could do that, but I think the last time we discussed this, the board opted to not do a full mailing.
I don't think we had a vote on it. I think we talked about it, but if, if it directs like a phone number to say, and, and the town will mail it to them, that's good.
Okay.
Then they have access to requesting it. Thank you.
Anything else? Super. Want to move on to the treasure report, please?
Right, let's see here. So this is for the month of November, or excuse me, October. Check reconciliation was completed through October thirty-first. Our accounts are in balance with the exception of one check that was issued that was bounced. We had a check at the transfer station that someone floated, basically, and we are working on collection right now. We have sent them certified mail and trying to collect that money, but that, that was an anomaly to see a bounced check like that. Warrant review. Teresa and I did meet with Sam Tepit to go over our municipal investments. Like anybody else that has money in the stock market, we've lost a portion of our value. That's not, not a bad thing necessarily. It's not what we want to be, but everybody's going down at the same rate, and we are able to stay in this for the long term, so we, we hold on to our assets and we continue to invest as we have funds come in. We are also looking at trying to invest some of our reserve funds and general fund balance into things like CDs to help get a better return on investment. We're talking about three to four percent potentially as opposed to a quarter of percent, which is what we get in the sweep accounts that these funds are currently sitting in, so we have a healthy balance, and we're looking at improving how we manage that money to get better returns on it. The fiscal year twenty twenty-one audit is underway, and the auditors were in onsite in October on the twentieth and twenty-first. We had a great discussion with them, and I think that we're going to have a pretty good audit this coming time around, and certainly more timely than the last one, which was delayed until the spring because we had that transition in auditors. Budget process, the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget is, that's begun. We have items on the agenda tonight. Talk about Select Board goals, and the first budget meeting is Thursday, November fourteenth at six thirty PM at the. And the first budget meeting is Thursday, November 14th at 6:30 PM at the town office and on Zoom. So comments on the budget. The report does cover the month of October. Revenues and expenditures should be at about 33% for the, for the year. Real estate payments for the month and year are up. Transfer station revenues were up for the month despite that, that bad check. It was a $700 check, so it was quite impactful on our revenues. Townwide revenues are down for the month, but, but nearly identical to the year when you look back at this time in 2021. And expenses also appear to be down or, excuse me, have to be up for the month, but down for the year. But again, as I discussed in prior month reports, we're actually running pretty well on budget. And the budget comparison is usually a better measure than the year-to-year comparison, depending on what kind of variability you have. So that is my report. I'm happy to take any questions.
Anyone? Excellent. Thank you very much, Eric. As always, we appreciate your information in these. And also if you are watching this after the fact, we also have during every meeting, Facebook updates going on as well. So follow the Town of Reed Field Facebook page. We move now to boards, committees, commissions and departments. Want to say thank you to the folks that gave us minutes than were submitted. And I can tell you exactly who that was. Yes, 21 is the page. We certainly appreciate the minutes. It helps us know what's going on and catching up. Cemetery Committee, thank you. Planning Board Minutes of July 19th and September 13th. Age Friendly Minutes of October 12th. The Conservation Commission checked in with a pretty much a nice timeline of things. March 8th, April 14th, June 14th, July 12th, August 9th and September 13th. It was captivating reading. And Trails Committee Minutes of July 12th, 2022. So thank you very much for getting those minutes in. If it is possible, the board, we would now take five minutes for public communication. If there's anyone here who would like to communicate with the select board, you may do so. Or if there's anyone at home, now is your opportunity.
Go, Mr. Reno.
Go ahead, sir, if you don't mind going to the podium and. Sure, that you didn't turn away from.
Got me.
Thank you.
Same to you.
Yeah.
Ralphino 52 Mountain View Lane, Reed Field. Budget time approaches, as Eric mentioned, and I am here on behalf of the Marana Cook Food Pantry to give you a heads up on an initiative that we have underway. And a senior member of the pantry is here, I think a founder. So Greg, if I misspeak, bring me up short. But basically, this is, I think, a courtesy visit to let you know what we are trying to do. Some of you have actually signed the ballot petition to get us on the ballot for the June 2023 warrant. What, what the pantry is looking for is an annual town contribution of $1,000 to offset our operating budget. Right now, we are solely funded by donations and occasional grants. Our operational expenses right now run to the tune of about $24,000 a year. We have no paid staff. It's all volunteer. And RSU 38 supplies the administrative functions for record keeping. They provide the building space. They pay the utilities. They do the thank you notes for donors as well. So right now we have no overhead other than just providing relief to folks who need it. Our costs are going up and that's no secret. You've all felt that pinch. And we anticipate that as winter goes along, our needs in terms of client service may also increase. So it was the sentiment of the group that it was time to perhaps approach the town of Reed Field for a very modest contribution to help us with our operating costs. And again, what we are looking for is $1,000 a year on an annualized basis. If it is approved and it gets on the warrant, what I think we would all deeply appreciate, as you well know, part of the budget process would be a thumbs up. This should pass recommendation from the select board and also the same endorsement from the budget committee. And if you can stand looking at me for a couple more times, I will be here when those social services appropriations are being discussed to, to reiterate our request. I think it's legitimate. And if it passes and the voters approve us in June, it gives us a foothold to approach our other RSU member towns to say, we have skin in the game now. How about you stepping up as well? It's not an inordinate amount of money, but what it does is it gives us an operating cushion because donations and grants are a peak and valley game. This will provide some stability for us so that we can hopefully provide continuity of service without any interrupts or hiccups. So that's what I'm here for. And hopefully at some point, you, you will bless it as it moves down the process. And Mr. Durgan, I hope I didn't leave anything out, but he's a founder.
Yes.
And, and if you got any real questions about what's going on, he's the guy.
I think that's the truth. Thank you very much, Ralph.
But Catherine wants to.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you very much for putting your time in during Election Day to gather signatures. And I, just so everybody knows and it's on the record, because this is a new request. It requires that you come with voter signatures and I believe was that 10%?
It's 10% of the latest gubernatorial election and that number is now 157. I will say tentatively that we have it because when I left the polling place, I had 151. And there are five other clipboards out there with members soliciting. So I suspect we will make that threshold comfortably without making Kristen do too much work to validate signatures.
And then the rest of the process from there, do, do they need to submit a formal letter along with that to the budget committee? Is that all that's left to be?
I'd have to look at the policy again. I'm not sure even a letter is necessary. I think as long as they have the petition and the language and a request like this, I think is very sufficient. But I'll look at the policy again.
I would be happy to write the letter. And Mr. Durgan, I think would be happy to sign it.
Karen, go ahead.
So Ralph, this was Marana, which, which food pantry is it?
This is RSU 38, the four towns.
High school?
Yeah.
Is that?
All of them. We are elementary schools, middle school. They're all part of RSU 38.
Right. But is it, is it located at the high school?
It is located at the middle school, but it's on the, it's on that complex. Yes. And you will see our sign out every Thursday.
Yes.
A lot of his deliveries. I think we serve on a weekly basis about 20 families, give or take, plus shut-ins, disabled folks, folks who do not have transportation to get, get to other food sources. And we don't means test. If you say you need it, we're going to provide it.
That's pretty cool. And I've seen the, the sign a lot and I didn't know you guys did deliveries and that's, it's extensive.
I think that's probably the lion's share of what goes on from my brief experience here. But there is also on that Thursday, a lot of curbside goes on.
That's amazing.
And there's a local, there's a local farmer who provides produce. It's, it's, I'm new to it, as I say, but it, it strikes me as, as being a really fantastic operation. And when you couple that with what Mount Vernon is doing and other pantries are doing, I don't think we've even scratched the surface of the need. But support for all of these groups is going to be very, very important, at least for the next year or so, at least if you're reading the tea leaves.
And that serves all ages? It sounds like, right?
We serve the four towns, Marana.
But all ages? Like it's not, we're not talking just school-aged families. We're talking.
There is screening in the school if there are students in need that get, get that extra help so that they get the nutritional support that they need.
Okay. It just sounds like your cost is, is great and that's a small ask. So I imagine that won't have any trouble.
If we can get four or five towns in line, in addition to $1,000 from Reed Field, gives us an operating cushion when the lean times hit. And there, as I said, there are lean times. It's peaks and valleys. But you should have seen, what do they call it? The Service Week, Greg?
Maybe different.
Yeah. The amount of food that came in from the kids and the fens was just overwhelming. And, and our, I think our shows were, were bursting at the end of it all. So people are involved. It's flown below the radar for a significant period of time. This gets us a little bit more public attention and maybe, well, it stabilizes our mission and maybe allows us when we discover additional lead to, to address it without too much compromise.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Ralph. We appreciate it. Go ahead, Ray.
One thing, Dennis, I do serve as the general assistance administrator for the town as well. We've had three requests in the last week and expect that trend's going to continue as things get colder. But one of the things that most, most of the time residents don't have a need for it, it, it's, it's food from the town or from, from me. I don't have to give food vouchers because of programs like the Marana Food Bank and the Mount Vernon Food Bank. And if someone does have a need, all it takes is here's a number, call, they'll, they'll help you out. They'll deliver. And it's been, they've been a great partner for the town and helping to reduce the cost that we have through general assistance. So I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to, to show our appreciation.
Cool. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Ralph. Excellent. Brett, go right ahead. You know the dance.
Good evening. My name is Greg Durgan, 104 Winter Road here in town. Got a little bit of a cold, so bear with me, I guess. Nice job, Ralph. Thanks for putting me on the spot. Yeah, I guess so. I'll be glad to answer any questions about the food pantry, but that's not why I'm here. But I can answer any questions if you have.
Do the volunteers, the people who deliver, are they volunteers and are they providing their own vehicle costs?
Yep.
That's amazing.
Yep. By the way, $1,000 will probably cover food purchases for about three to four weeks.
So that's significant if you get four towns to buy into that. That's awesome.
Just to let you know. I'm here because back in, back in July, July, I'm sorry, August 13th. The select board had a letter in the community advertiser. And I assume it's a letter from the whole select board, but Dennis wrote it, signed it. I think he signed it. But we go select will check. In it, talks about communications through the advertiser regarding the town, either town projects, et cetera. I'm not going to read that whole thing to you. I'm just going to quote a little bit. Over the last few months, and certainly during our last town election, we noticed that folks use this very publication to spread misinformation about our town and town projects. In an effort to combat this malignant misdirection, I love that alliteration, malignant misdirection, and be more productive and transparent, we thought it might be best to hear from the horses mouth, the proverbial horse mouth. I singled those, those two sentences out because for two weeks prior to that in May, I had paid for two letters, two articles we printed in the community advertiser. And I guess I take a little offense that it might be those words malignant and malicious might be directed at me in my publication. I don't believe there was any misinformation in my articles. Certainly wasn't any nastiness or whatever. I put in those letters everything that I had said publicly at meetings and was never called on the carpet, if you will, for being, providing misinformation or what's that other word? Malignant. So I guess if you, I did receive some responses to my letters, plus the two of the community advertisers and the one to the Kennebec Journal, all positive. Had three or four people call me and say, I wish you'd put your letter in before the election. I voted early and I didn't have a chance to do that. Be that as it may, I guess I'd just like to know what's going on with my letters and being malignant and mischievous.
I can take this. I'm, I'm, I don't, I'm sorry you feel that way, but that was just in general, I think, for a lot of publications that find their way in the advertisers. So I don't think we were singling out certainly any particular person, any particular group. We know that there's all kinds of wild things that are sometimes posted in the advertiser. And certainly that's what I felt. You know what I mean? And regardless of, of, you know, who it, who it does or who posts a letter. I, I, I certainly want it to be, you know, not misleading and things like that, but certainly not trying to, to single anyone out, I don't think.
But if you paint everybody with the same brush who submits articles, how, what would you expect me to feel?
Well, I, I, I don't know, Greg. I'm sorry you feel singled out. I, I mean, I, I just feel like we want to make sure that when we start communicating to the public about these things that are going on, we felt like it was important that it comes from the select board. And if you'll notice, the select board has started to do some report out into the advertiser. So we just wanted to cut out the, the middle person and just make sure that the select board has a voice in that same paper.
But it doesn't preclude citizens from submitting?
Certainly not. No, 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 no. We just want to make sure that the information that is published is factual. It's, it's based in reality and it's what is the truth. That's what we want.
And I think my letter contained all that.
Sure. I mean, I don't remember seeing, I remember seeing your letter. Yeah, absolutely.
You do.
I do remember seeing your letter. Yeah.
I know. You want me to read it? I brought it with me.
Excuse me.
Do you want me to read it? I brought it with me.
Oh, no, 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 that's fine. I don't need to read it.
I think what we were after was having a voice that came similar to, I believe, I know Monmouth publishes their, a synopsis of their meetings in the advertiser. I think Winter does some also. And we thought it was a good idea because not everybody gets the messenger. More people get the advertiser, although that is a dwindling population and that advertiser may not be running this winter, I have heard.
That would be terrible.
Because revenues are down from advertising and so you can't publish a newspaper if you don't have money. But in any case, as long as it's running, we thought that it was a good idea because it was another way to have transparency. And multiple people have asked us to be as transparent as possible. And so it just seemed that that was a good thing to do. And that's, that as a board, that's where we were coming from. Am I speaking for all of us?
I think so. I think I, I can understand your concern about the, the language, Greg, you know, the, and being painted with the same brush, you know? Certainly I'll, I'll say on the record for myself, I, I read your letters. There's a few big words that using as a former English teacher that I had to look up, but you know, but they were, they were, they were all truthful. You know, I, I had no quarrel. I didn't look at anything you wrote there and said, oh, that's wrong. Did you have to look up words like malignant or misdirection? No, I was good with those.
It's good alliteration. We tried.
It is good. So without putting words in the boy's mouth, you weren't singling out my letter. You don't think it was malignant or misleading or anything? I just want to be clear.
But we just want to make sure that people know in the communication of the select board, we felt like it was important that, that we get a little space in the advertiser as well. So whether, whether, I mean, you know, whether or not your letter is, is, you know, we, we love your letter, read your letter. I, I don't think that's the point. But I, I just, I think we were just making sure people knew that we wanted to make sure the, the select board was being heard directly.
There have been a lot of things published over the course of the last year or several years by various citizens in town. And not all of them contain facts that are based in reality. I'm happy to go on the record with that. And I'm not going to single out who it is. I think we've all received those things stuffed in our mailboxes, stuffed on the side of the road.
Right. There was one in the last Friday's. Another tap. Yes, I understand.
And so I think that was just a way for us to say that we're trying to take the high road and to give people the opportunity to read what happens at our meetings that are recorded, they're printed. that are recorded, they're printed, they're approved, their minutes are approved at our meetings and now we're putting it in the paper as well. And to me, that's the beginning and end of it.
But thank you.
For?
For letting us know about that. I, I, we don't want to, you know, be singling.
Maybe change the words a little bit next time, like some, but not all that appeared here.
Sure.
Just, you don't have to paint us all with the same brush.
Yeah.
It ride good and bad out here. You know, my reputation like yours is pretty important. I live in this town, been here a long time. I don't think I have that kind of a persona that I'm using malicious and mischievous and being that way. You said it much better.
I, I, I can. Yes, sir. That's right.
Just a couple more things. Carol, the town library also has public computers that people can go for the survey.
True.
Okay. I don't know if Eric mentioned that or not.
Are they accessible now at the library? They're available for use at the library?
Wouldn't open, yes.
Great. Thank you.
We also talked at our last meeting about, was it our last meeting about setting up a kiosk here?
Yeah.
Well, it's not.
Just at the library.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that just sounds like a big cost that might have little use.
Well, I don't know. I think every opportunity we have, that's something you've been pushing us to do. And if we have a computer that's older and not being used and it's only accessible for certain things here at the town, I think that makes it just one more opportunity for people to be able to use.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Greg. Anyone else for public comment? Excellent. If it's all right with the board, we are going to take some items out of order because they involve real humans and we want them to be, yes, absolutely. We're going to start with 23050, which is to consider the appointment of George O'Connor as an alternate member of the planning board. George, if you don't mind, come up to the podium, introduce yourself and you can find George's application on page twenty?
Four, five.
Five. Twenty-five of the packet, page twenty-five.
I'm George O'Connor. As Dennis said.
That's it.
I see him on TV back there, but that's all right. Yeah. So.
Just tell us a little bit about how you, you find out about being on the planning board. Yeah.
Known C V D since, since he was C V D at the lab rat, teaching tennis.
You must be getting old.
I am. Well, that's.
Yeah. Well, I just like in your.
You are too.
Oh, yeah. Application.
Better than the alternative. Remember that.
Excellent.
I'm alternate. Yeah. I will be alternate forever.
No, I mean, yeah. Never mind. Keep going.
Okay. Anyway, yeah. So, yeah, I grew up in Wayne. My parents were involved with town government. I love Reedfield, lovely whole area. And I'm a Realtor, so I know the importance of a planning board. It's a real thing. I didn't before, but now I do. And it's very important. It really is. So especially in a beautiful town like this where oversight means a lot. So anyway, love to help. I got time.
Excellent. Cool.
And, and, and I'm a fair person. I like to think I am.
Well, I appreciate you coming forward and I appreciate the comments in there about getting a little older, feeling like it's time to give back, but I think you're a little on the younger side compared to some others. So we're really thankful for that because we want to keep some younger blood in this system. So thank you very much for.
Sure.
I would make a motion to appoint George.
I do have a question.
Sure.
George, are you open to attending meetings in person?
Of course.
The planning board tends to not do that. I think it's very important. Appreciate knowing that.
No, I know that. Yeah.
And you would also do Zoom meetings too. You're familiar with that as well?
No, I don't, I don't, I will not. Well, I don't want to.
Yeah.
I do not like Zoom meetings. But I guess I'm open.
But if it has to take place on Zoom, you would participate.
Again, I may be younger, but I'm more old school. I don't like Zoom meetings. But anyway, sure, I'll do it, I guess.
Absolutely. Sometimes you have to. Excellent. I take a nomination or a motion to entertain this.
I'd make a motion to appoint George S. O'Connor to the planning board. Is this as an alternate?
Yes.
As an alternate for a period beginning tonight and going through June 30th, 2026.
Ooh, we got you. We got you. It's been moved and seconded to nominate George O'Connor to the planning board as an alternate member. So thank you very much for being on standby for that through 6:30, 2026. Is there any further discussion? Thank you for your service. All in favor? Very well. Thank you very much, George. We appreciate it. Awesome job. Yeah.
Congratulations.
If it would also please the board, I would like to then move to item 23051, which is to consider a liquor license for the Weathervein Restaurant. It is, we have this under new business, but since June and John are here, we wanted to get right to it. I believe it's on page thirty.
Yes.
And if you guys want to come on up, that would be great. Thank you so much. Well, hello there, friends. So I know, right? So, so a year ago, you were right here and you were just starting out as the new owners. It was somewhat like a, a new and, and fresh thing. I, I, I wanted to just sort of ask you a few questions about your year in review. The first one being mostly, how has it been going for you in this year?
Unbelievable.
Yes? Would you like to elaborate?
Unbelievable. Good?
Yeah. In what ways?
I mean, any business has its peaks and valleys, right?
Yeah.
Is that what we were saying earlier? But this community has been nothing but supportive of the family business that we operate here and it is, owning a restaurant doesn't, you know, make people wealthy financially, but being a part of this community in that sort of a way is, fills my heart bucket. So it matters and I think it matters to our entire community.
Have you, how have you found doing business in this town?
I love all of you. I love that you come and do business at the Weathervein and I love that, you know, if there's ever a question or something that we're in need of, we can have a conversation about it and it doesn't just get thrown off the docket because, you know, it might not be something that you prefer to deal with or talk about. We've had to do some renovations recently, upkeep and things to the building and we haven't had any sort of issue. Very fond of the code enforcement officer that you have in place right now and our town manager, Eric. I think you guys are doing a great job and I appreciate the support.
Awesome.
Thank you, Rusty. I'll go get you.
If I could just say, we own the new Iron Fence Inn just down the road and we've had a good season, but our number one, like suggestion locally is you guys and nine out of 10 times our guests go there because they can walk.
Thank you very much.
And they come back like that was so good, which makes me happy because it's not like, oh, just go down the road. You know, my friend, they really have a great night. The atmosphere is awesome. The food is excellent.
Thank you.
Hands down, your trivia night. I know a lot of people that enjoy that. So
Thank you.
You guys are doing great.
Thanks very much.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, I would just like to say that you're a great part of the community also. I mean, you're tremendously supportive of the kids at school, staff at school. I mean, it's a two-way street, you know, and you guys have been great. You're, you know, June, your parents were great for years and years and years.
And actually, my dad wanted me to also say, because he knew we were coming to the meeting, if I had an opportunity to speak, that he feels the same way that I feel about the town of Reedfield and how supportive they've always been of him in the last 20 years of business as well.
So we really appreciate, I mean, I super appreciate that. It's very nice of you to bring John along also.
I'd like to be included when I can. Jeff, Jeff and Gloria, her parents, former owners, were quite moved this summer when they won the Spirit of America Award and Dennis presented that during the Heritage Days. You know, when we talk about it beforehand, just in discussion, it was kind of an offhand thing, but when the award was presented and the people were there and they saw the plaque and they read it and they felt it, it was, it was very moving and they, they really felt, you know, the, the community that they really have been a part of. And it was the thanks, not that they've been looking for, but that they, you know, it just, it really overwhelmed them and made them feel great to have done what they did for 21 years here in the, in the town and to the, you know, the, the school and everything to support everybody.
Well, I know that as the select board and I know Carol has worked on this, we all sort of collectively as a select board work on this, but promoting business in this town is, 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 I think, pretty easy because it's a great place to do business. So thank you so much for coming in and just, just letting us know, you know, how things are from your perspective. It's easy for us to approve applications and permits and things like that, but when we hear the stories that, that, you know, somehow at the beginning of the process, we were able to, you know, help get some of this in a small way started. We, it, it means a lot to us as well. So the work we do is, is appreciated and, and things like that. So thank you very much. Anyone else?
It's very heartening for us. As I mentioned earlier, we only have one employee as the select board. So it's very nice for us to hear something direct from the public about our employee. And so we're, my personal feelings are he's a great employee, but it's always like you said for your parents. It's always nice to hear that from someone else and to know that it's really appreciated and that he's doing right by the town, not just, you know, what we think is right, but you know, you folks interpret it the same way. So really appreciate you being honest that way.
And I think also to have the restaurant successful through COVID takes a lot of guts, a lot of hard work, a lot of creativity. So, and that's, there's not a lot of businesses that survive that. So.
We thoroughly enjoyed it because it gave us a reason to get out of the house, even though we had to mask and glove up. We got to see some people masked and gloved up and help people make dinner when they didn't have anything else to do. So it was equally rewarding.
Right. I would.
So I would like to make a motion that we waive their need for a public hearing on this license first.
Yes.
We haven't received any complaints in the last year about the.
There's no need.
So there appears to be no need from the public.
So there's, so we will waive the public hearing. Would you like to make that motion?
I thought I did.
Oh, sorry.
He did. He did make it.
I want to make sure. I thought it was a question.
No, he did make that motion. I would second that motion.
All right. Very well. It's been moved and seconded to suspend the need for public hearing. All in favor? Very well. It is suspended. And now we can make the motion for these licenses.
And I would happily make a motion to approve this license for the term 1215, 2022 to 1214, 2023.
Yes, but would you like to make a motion about that?
I think I did.
Folks, okay. Thank you, Steve. It's been moved and seconded to approve this application for the Weathervein from 1215 of 22 to 1214 of 23. All in, any more discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So I have heard through the grapevine that there is some need and I have witnessed it as a person driving down Route 17 for some additional parking. And I am aware of the fact that you have no additional space to do that in. And I'm also aware that the town of Reedfield is one of your butters. And I think we have discussed anecdotally, a few of us in private. If there's anything that we might be able to do to assist you with creating more parking, we have parking available at the beach in two different areas, the lower gravel lot and the upper grass lot. And I don't know what arrangements we might be able to make to maybe share those spaces. You're primarily open in the evening.
Correct. After the beaches.
We, we have had discussions, obviously, with your one employee. And we will be, I believe, engaging in more conversation to make more formal arrangements with that. I'm trying to clear a pathway between my property and the town property to make a lighted area to allow for customers to travel from the parking lot up through into the Weathervein with that permission. So, yeah, we are, we were, we're happy to engage in those conversations to increase our parking capacity.
And the safety of Reedfield.
Absolutely. Yeah. And I, 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 I agree. I mean, I, I, I always am trepidatious about parking on the side of 17. So it, it seems like a safety issue as well. So thank you for bringing that up. We have a motion on the floor. We are getting ready to vote on it. All in favor of approving this? Very well. Thank you very much. And thank you guys for being here.
Thank you.
I think we forgot something. Maybe we should have come up in communications. I'm new at this town meeting stuff, but John and I were wondering if there was any way that we, because we're going to be decorating for Christmas, we were thinking about designating one of the trees at the Weathervein because it does seem to be such a public community to maybe help some of the people that are less fortunate this time of year, children, especially with Christmas gifts and things. I don't know how much information you're able to give out, but boy, girl, this, that, that we could put on a tree and help to, you know, gather some of these things that maybe you already have something like that in place, but we could also help facilitate that.
We do something like that here in town.
Well, we had, yeah, the town office had managed that, but now it's the RSU that handles that. So we can give you some contact for the RSU.
Great. Excellent.
I think they probably appreciate the support.
Great. I'll, I can give you a little bit more information. It used to be something that was handled in town. And then I think a lot of it is now being handled through the, is it Hope Baptist Church in Manchester on the highway there? I know that for the local churches, they've all kind of gone to that. I belong in the Wayne Church and we still do something local in town. So if you don't get what you need from the RSU, I think there are places you can go in town and we could help you with who to contact.
Yeah.
To actually get a different list.
We might just see people that maybe wouldn't be seen otherwise. So I just thought it'd be nice to put it out for a public display for the people that are coming in, pick a little.
Yeah, I think it'd be, yeah, June, I think it's a great idea. You know, Jada has a good list going. I know that.
Yeah. Okay. Clark?
Yeah. I know you meant, yeah, so she does have a lot.
Also at the high school, Anya Davidson is the school nurse and she's also involved. She'd be glad to help you. They had to actually, I don't know exactly why, because I'm not there anymore, but they had to not do their normal kids who care thing, which is in early December where they do a lot of that stuff. And so they're looking for this. I'm sure they would be glad to use.
So I'll reach out to Anya. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you guys at all. Very good.
And you also don't have to stay, but are welcome to.
And our, our last, our, our last. Are you here for something in particular? Sir, I just want to make sure that, okay, excellent. It's a real person and I just want to make sure that.
It's a real person.
Eric, well, no, no, no. I just want to make sure that we, we, we get that stuff out of the way first. So exact, and, and you are here for what portion? Excellent. Okay. Gotcha. Excellent. And then Paula, would you like to also be taken out of order so that you can go early as well? Would that be okay with everyone since we're doing that?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I mean, we also, don't lose track, please, of Chris Salmon's appointment at the Budget Committee because they're meeting on Thursday.
Oh, absolutely not. I just wanted to get all of the human stuff out of the way. Thank you guys very much. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Excellent. All right. Well, if you want to, if, yes.
Will I get a sign form, say tomorrow?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, I got it right here. Yeah, absolutely. Come back by tomorrow. Okay. Thank you. Excellent. Paula, would you like to go ahead? This is item on our agenda. This is item 23053. This is Chairperson Clark on the planning board, remote meeting participation. We were talking about that earlier. Paula, whenever you are ready.
Is that on our?
Yes, it is. Right here. New business. Oh, is it under here? Is it on?
There was nothing in the packet. It said reserved for later.
Yeah.
But it is item.
Twenty-three zero.
Twenty-three zero five. But there's no one else. Okay.
Thank you, Paula.
Okay, thanks. Good evening. I'm Paula Clark. I chair the planning board. Thanks for giving me a few minutes tonight on your agenda. I appreciate it. As you'll recall, we briefly talked about the issue of remote meeting participation during the boards and commissions meeting several weeks ago. And in reflecting on that, we talked about it very briefly, but I did feel it was important to follow up with you to provide a little more information and I hope a more complete picture of the situation with the planning board in that regard. You know, it, it did cause me some consternation that, you know, there really wasn't much time to talk about it. And I felt it was important to try to close that loop and provide a little bit more in terms of. close that loop and provide a little bit more um in terms of what we do and why we do it. Um, I did have some discussion with the planning board about this issue at our last regular meeting. Uh, we had talked about it previously. Um, you know, we did have quite some time ago uh, some communication from Eric. Um, at your request, Eric had reached out to all the boards and commissions about the policy and to encourage boards and commissions to meet in person. Um, but um, understanding that it was ultimately going to be an individual member choice about um, how they would participate depending on their own particular circumstances and so forth. Um, so I did um raise the issue with the planning board, as I mentioned, at our last regular meeting so that we could have some additional conversation about it. I wanted to make sure that I, I fully, fairly, accurately captured their, their perspectives. Um, I didn't want to come back and talk to you until I'd had that discussion with them. Um, I wanted to make sure that um we were um aligned uh in the way that we were thinking about this. And um, I think we are. Um, as we had discussed at the boards and commissions meeting, uh, the planning board has primarily been meeting remotely. Uh, you know that, and that did come up in conversation. That situation, as everyone knows, was initially precipitated by the COVID situation. Um, and um, but I do feel that it's important to stress that at this point, there are multiple reasons um why uh, certain members choose to participate remotely or, or in person. It's not just around that one issue. Um, COVID remains a consideration to some extent, um, you know, for certain members, but it's not the only factor. Um, I had mentioned my own situation at the last meeting, uh, in part because I wasn't comfortable speaking on behalf of all planning board members at that point without going back to confirm with them what their perspectives actually were. Um, and you know, I had mentioned that, um, you know, I'm generally uncomfortable in large group settings. I'm looking to minimize my exposure and my risk. I think most people are. And in part, my own situation, I, it also has to do with a, a relative who is immune compromised. Uh, someone that I, I, I tend to be rather protective of and, and look out for. And so, you know, that's part of my own personal package. So I, uh, I'm looking to minimize risk, um, you know, not only in my own behalf, but um, um, you know, that, that relative as well. Um, but you know, COVID is not the sole driver in my decision making. I mean, I participate in remote meetings for a variety of reasons as do other planning board members. Um, so in that conversation that we had, uh, the planning board had about this issue, there were several takeaways or points that I, I just wanted to mention to you that came through in that discussion. Uh, one thing uh that came through loud and clear is that there is a, you know, certainly a collective feeling, a consensus feeling. And everyone here knows it as well. Things are different now uh than they were pre-COVID. Uh, there are systems in place, there are mechanisms in place that facilitate remote meetings. And there are a lot of benefits. There certainly are some downsides and everyone's pretty well aware of those as well. Um, you know, having uh personal interactions with people um is, you know, is generally a good thing. But there are a lot of benefits uh to being able to participate remotely. And in both, you know, the public and the private sectors um have obviously moved in that direction. My own experience in state government is that business meetings, um, all of it can be conducted very successfully um remotely. And uh, that is in fact how my agency is conducting business principally at this point in time. Um, so both public and private sectors have moved in that direction. Um, talking to my, my two children who are consumed by the corporate world at this point in their young lives, um, it's um hybrid systems completely. Uh, the companies are huge, uh, they're successful, um, and that is how they operate. Um, I think, you know, back to the planning board, remote participation allows a lot of schedule, uh, schedule flexibility. There are situations where we might not have a quorum. Um, and I think that the ability to participate remotely minimizes the number of situations in which that occurs. Um, we've not been in a situation where we've not had a forum for quite some time now. Uh, it used to happen with some regularity, quite honestly. Uh, people are busy. Um, uh, you know, their schedules don't allow them to be in two or three places at once. And I certainly don't mean to suggest that the planning board members have busier schedules than everybody else. I mean, you know, obviously that's not true. People have busy lives. Everyone does. But um, you know, I do know uh the business of the planning board and what the planning board members have told me. And having that ability um provides the flexibility that some of them need to be able to participate at all. I'm quite convinced that if we did not have that option, there are at least several members um who would have to withdraw from serving on, on the planning board because of their situations and their schedules. Now, some of the specific issues that came up uh during the planning board's discussion were uh things, um, uh, travel, frequent travel. Um, uh, not only pleasure, but, but for business, um, that really affects their schedules and their abilities to participate in planning board meetings. Um, uh, a couple of childcare situations um where they would not be able to participate frequently uh unless they could do it remotely. Work schedules, personal schedules. Um, there were one or two planning board members who have frequent contact um or care responsibilities for an elderly relative or an immune, immune compromised relative. Uh, and that affects their um, their perspective on risk reduction, I guess. Um, and uh, there is um there are one or two members um whose own personal uh health situations, um, health considerations uh really caused them to, you know, to withdraw from public settings. Um, so again, it, you know, it was very clear to me that some members would likely not be able to continue uh their service on the planning board, which I think would be very unfortunate. Um, as a group, planning board members are very committed to the work that they do. They think it's tremendously important. They are very committed to doing it. And remote participation allows some of them to continue that. Um, a fourth point um that there was agreement around among planning board members was that there is a general feeling that remote meetings and participation does not negatively affect the quality of the work that the planning board does. Um, and that didn't come from just one or two members. That was uh pretty much the consensus across the board, but that was their experience and their feeling. Um, and then finally, uh, there was conversation, um, acknowledgement uh that there may be situations in which it's important and or appropriate for some reason um to consciously plan and participate in an in-person meeting, depending on what the issue might be that comes before the planning board. Uh, there was not opposition to doing that um in certain circumstances. Uh, there might be one or two who might not be able to do that. But you know, there was a willingness to talk further about that and what those situations might look like, where it would be important to hold an in-person meeting um instead of a remote meeting. Um, so the intent was to follow up on that, to have more conversation about that. And um, you know, again, and finally, I would just say again, the planning board is a very committed group of people. Um, they do um believe in what they're doing. Um, and um, I do think it's important to provide them the tools they need to facilitate their participation. So that's all I have. Um, I, I hope it just provides you a little more information about what the thought process was um, on the part of planning board members. And if you have questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Go ahead, Karen.
Um, three reasons why I think the planning board, those that can attend in person should. Um, first of all, the planning board is the first members of the community that some people that are going to buy a property, build a property, start a business, have access to in this town of Reedfield. Um, it's very impersonal. Um, the gentleman I am familiar with has been in front of the planning board seven times, I believe, and has yet to meet any one of you in person. He has come frequently from New Hampshire with his architect that many times. And people that can drive across town just don't. Um, secondly, um, I, there was even an example that he shared that there was a site visit at his property after which the members of the planning board got in their cars and left and went home to zoom the meeting. That one just really blew my mind. Um, instead of driving to the town office, that one just sounds really absurd to me. Um, secondly, um, the planning board looks at architectural plans. I was present at a meeting where someone's like, I don't know what what map you're looking at. And Chip Stevens is standing up in front of the video going this one, and they're trying to go over an architectural plan remotely. You guys have a very unique um things that you guys deal with that most committees do not deal with. Um, so there is a challenge there. And I think, um,
Now, I remember there being an answer to that, Carol. And it's because the materials are available
Dennis, can I, can I continue?
Uh, well, I, I guess, I, I want to know if you're asking a question or we're hearing the same old things about the planning board.
No, I am telling why I think those that can be in attendance should be in attendance. Can I continue?
Sure. Yes, but I want to just make note that Paula is here to help answer why the, the background of why they're coming in.
Fully heard.
I, 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 I just don't want to continue this tired run of, of questions and things about the
I, I talked about this once.
Many times you've talked about it, Carol, but I just am tired of hearing it. Go right ahead.
Of the committee.
Go right ahead. Absolutely. But I, I, I want to make sure people know that this is
I'm just asking that those, Paula, that can attend, please attend. It's just extremely impersonal. Um, I, and I, the very first meeting I went to, I was a selectman for one month. I attended a meeting. Um, the tone of it was astonishing. It's just, um, I, I don't understand if you're going to make a commitment to a committee if they're a Reedfield resident, they don't have far to travel. Um, if these people are coming to attend the meetings and coming from a great distance, that those that can attend should be encouraged to. That's all I'm asking. If one or two of you have your reasons, I, I get that. Um, but all of you, every meeting can't have a reason not to attend.
I would just like to say, I'd just like to thank Paula on the planning board for thoughtfully providing this feedback to us and giving us your thoughts. So, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. And, and Paul, I, I would also say that, you know, from my perspective, I think it'd be great if there were um in-person meetings, but I also feel very strongly that we're asking the planning board to do very specific work that is challenging and requires a level of expertise that not everybody has. And if we have people on that board who have that level of expertise and want to meet remotely and that's the best way they see fit to do the work, I think we as a select board need to trust the boards to do the very best they can in the way they see fit. That's why we have a planning board, not a subcommittee of the select board doing that work. And so, you know, again, I, I would go, I would say, I would love to see the meetings in person, but I also would absolutely respect what the planning board thinks is best for the work they do.
Catherine, go ahead.
I'm sorry, personally speaking, just for myself, that you had a need to come here to make this explanation to us. Um, I was very uncomfortable at the last meeting where that was brought up. Um, I didn't think it was fair. I, it's gone on too long, in my opinion. Um, we're not here to champion any particular resident or potential resident or committee. We're here to be an overseeing body. Um, we have a select board policy about meetings. And we have been following that. Carol, you and I have both recently, in the last two months, both attended a meeting remotely. Um, it, it's not up to anything in our policy that I needed to tell why I was participating remotely. And I don't expect anyone else in this town to have to tell their reasons either. Um, I, I feel the planning board has been singled out unfairly. Uh, we haven't talked about any other committee. There are other committees where people are also meeting remotely more than not. Um, we made a policy, we didn't, and, and we're standing by it. And I think as a group, we need to do that. Um, so I'm going to make a motion. If no one sent, um, chooses to second it or vote on it, I'm okay with that. But I would like to uh make a motion that the select board offer their appreciation for the efforts that the planning board makes in performing their work and that we support the work that you've been doing and hope that you continue to do so.
Thank you.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded uh to issue a select board supportive statement for the work the planning board is doing. Uh, is there any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you, Carol.
Sure.
Thank you, Paul, very much for coming in.
Thank you for giving me the time. I appreciate it.
You got it.
Thanks.
Excellent. All right. Our last in-person uh, uh, person is here. Last in-person person is here, but I know that we should go ahead and extend the meeting, please.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting for fifteen minutes till eight ten. Uh, for till eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen, it's been moved and
second.
Seconded uh to extend the meeting. All in favor?
Is that enough time?
If it's not, we can extend again.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you very much. All right.
I don't know what's left.
Go right ahead. I believe that this is item uh twenty three zero fifty two. Consider management recommendations for grassland areas at the fairgrounds. Uh, and I'm going to tell you what letter that is in your packet.
Oh, yeah, it is in there.
From September fourteenth, twenty twenty.
Forty three.
That one.
Yes. Forty three, okay. Thank you very much for your patience. All right. Uh, yes, on page forty three, it is the mowing plan of the old Fairgrounds property. Um, you want to, it, just introduce yourself and talk a little bit about the plan and, and what you're doing and what you need.
Sure. Uh, my name's Andy Walsh. I'm a member of the Conservation Commission. And um, I kind of cobbled this together. It's uh it could be tightened up a little bit. I, I, I guess we could call it a bit of a draft. Uh, but basically, it's um it is a mowing plan. Uh, we have, you know, the fields at the fairgrounds, uh, some of which, you know, may be reduced in size, uh, if the ball field is built, but we'll have the uh fields there. We want to uh, the commission would like to manage the fields for their conservation value. Uh, specifically the pollinators, they would be the target. Um, and I guess more specifically for the monarch butterfly, which is slated to be listed um is endangered uh, under the federal Endangered Species Act. And I believe December of twenty twenty four, if it happens, that's the next scheduled
Right.
time period for review. Um, anyways, the plan basically uh lays out some recommendations, uh, probably the most important of which is scheduling mowing. And um, in order to kind of conserve the, the abundance and diversity of flowers we have there, it would be wise to not mow during the summer, but uh, uh, mow, we're, we're recommending after October first. Um, after the golden rod and the milkweed have flowered and we're going to seed. That way they'd be available for insects and, and monarch butterflies, of which we do see them on a regular basis over there. So the field is serving that, that purpose. We know that. Um, so that, that's um, the mowing schedule between October first and May first is probably the key thing within this plan. And I think we've been doing that. As far as I know, I have not personally been keeping a close eye on when they mow, but the field is in decent shape. It's um in terms of its value for pollinators, it's in pretty good shape. It's uh full of flowers. Um, and uh, as I mentioned, we see a lot of insects there, including the butterflies. So, um, there's other uh little recommendation and a recommendation little recommendation and, uh, recommendations in here, uh, if mowing is to be done, uh, outside of that period that we try to avoid, uh, mowing down the milkweed. Try to avoid mowing, uh, you know, patches of golden rod that, uh, a- as well. Let's see what else. Um, another important part of this is to control woody vegetation. Uh, there is some risk when you don't know, of course, that it's going to grow back up into, um, you know, woody plants, ultimately saplings, and, you know, we don't want that to happen. So, uh, I, I made mention here that we could potentially rotate mowing, mow half one year uh, in the other half, the following year. Um, and we would, if we were to kind of experiment in that way, we would monitor the field, see how it's doing, if it's still providing the value that we want. Uh, and if not, adapt, um, the mowing regime and mow more frequently. So some of that could go on and, and as I said, I mean, a lot of these ideas just kind of tossed in here. Um, I, I guess whoever, uh, the town staff, uh, person who would do the mowing, we would want to have a conversation with and kind of settle on a more definitive plan. Uh, but this is kind of, you know, the outline of what we were driving at. So.
Anyone have any questions? The, the mowing plan, well, this is just sort of a, just bringing this to us and, and kind of proposing it. Like you said, it's in a draft form, some ideas, some of these things I think we, we kind of do maybe pay attention to a little bit, but some things maybe not as much and, and things like that. So.
We do mow it late though, right? We do currently.
I, I believe that's what I.
We mow it late, right? And that's separate from, that's, that's just the, the portion right next to the parking lot and the portion behind the cemetery, right? Those are the two pieces that we monitor for that. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the piece south of the existing baseball field. Uh, it was mowed in the fall of the last few years anyways. I, I think the only area that gets mowed, you know, at other times is the parking area occasionally that's needed, overflow parking.
So, yeah. I'm sorry, this includes the recreational area, it seems, so like the trunk or treat we had in late October would be affected by this?
Well, again, this is not hard and fast necessarily. I mean, our desire, the commission's desire is to manage the field for ecological value. It, it, it doesn't preclude, you know, necessarily mowing for extra parking, put it that way.
I'm not talking about extra parking, but just the use of the field. So, um.
Well, what, I'm not sure.
Well, what you're talking about, Carol, is after they would, their idea of a timeline anyway, because they're talking about the first of October.
Right.
Halloween is the end of October.
But you have kids, I mean, if you have, um, ball games going on there, you have kids on bikes and running and playing. It, so I know like if you come through the trails and come up over the hill along the sidewalk by the high school, there's an abundance of stuff there, milkweed included and all kinds of stuff. So it seems that's a multi-use area with kids present and playing and ball fields and all kinds of stuff that I don't know. It seems that's.
Well, that's hay up there.
Yeah, it is.
That's hay.
Okay, but does the rec cool with having restrictions on mowing during certain parts of the summer?
We still mow, we only mow the ball field. We don't ever do any of the.
Yeah.
That's, that's all our stuff and they, and they get, um, I think halls from Mount Bergen to come in and hay it.
Yeah.
But they do it later in the year, just before school starts, before the kids start running for cross country.
Okay, so we don't normally mow that now? So this isn't really a change?
No, this is not.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, this is really just the field in the fairgrounds area.
Right.
You know, from the park.
The intermediary between the parking lot and the actual field.
But if, uh, if the plan go proceeds with multiple fields there, that precludes that.
Right, that would be, that would be part of, yeah, I mean, you'd have to take that into consideration.
So, Carol, you brought up an interesting point, which is where I'm coming at with this. Um, I don't know if you are aware in our, um, select board retreat that we held towards the end of September, one of the things that we talked about doing was, um, that I'm spearheading is making, um, in a one place inventory of all the town properties. And so, uh, of course, we have the open space plan, which does a great job at bringing a lot of those in. But there are other municipally owned properties as well. Um, and I think that maybe what we're looking at here is making a plan for all of the town properties on, for everything. And one of those things would be for conservation. And if we're looking at a mowing plan, what would our mowing plan be for all of the town properties? Not just singling out a particular part of one property, the fairgrounds and a piece of that. But what, what is the best plan for accomplishing your conservation goals in town wide? Um, and I think that's something that we need to work together on. I don't know if that's an expansion of the open space plan or if it's just a review of that plan to see what's in there. I know there are some things that have changed, uh, because it was written in two thousand and six, I believe.
Yep. Um, and I imagine that this timeline would work well with our facilities, folks. Then, you know, I think we spend plenty of time in the good summer months, mowing cemeteries, the beach, the other folks. So, I mean, I feel like this.
Right. So I think it's, it would be who of all of us to meet your goal. Um, which I just want to mention, um, it's good that this is just a, a plan that you're putting forth because the management actually belongs to the town manager to then instruct the employees on what to do. Because, um, no board, even the select board can tell the employees when they're going to mow or where they're going to mow or how often they're going to mow, um, because it doesn't fall under any of our control. Um, but we can certainly all make our suggestions. Um, and if we wanted to, we could make an ordinance um, and then have the townspeople vote on it. That way we would have more of a voice than just the manager. So those are options that we have available. But I, I think it would be good to maybe start working on this a little bit more earnestly and bring, I don't know, could we do a workshop on this maybe in December or in January?
Yeah, and this is, is this all town properties they're talking about or, yeah, yeah.
I, so I'd want to have Matt Seams at least there, head of maintenance, um, and the Conservation Commission, and maybe someone from Trails, not like twenty-five people, but just to have a conversation, you know, about
Town on Lands.
Town on Lands and direction that, you know, what's everybody's, is it bellywip that you have, you know, what, what, what is it you have in the game? And, and how can we bring those together so that we work together and try and accomplish everybody's goals? Um, because I think we were going a little bit away from that this last year. It, it felt like the committees were kind of opposing rather than coming together, um, including our board. And so I think we need to find a way to work through this whole thing together. It, but I, I think it's important to include like the old transfer station area and the area down by the beach and not just the beach, but along the road there.
To this, yeah, all the other areas.
And Skunk Hollow and, uh, the town farm forest and, and put all of those pieces together because I know there are different people involved in each of those properties and we all need to have a place to come and talk. Um, so I think this is a great idea to become part of the bigger plan.
Yeah, I did, I just did want to clarify, this was just for the fairgrounds immediate area.
Yeah, but you just planted a seed and now we're going to take that seed.
So you planted a seed, you pollinated a flower.
See what I did there?
No, I, I agree. I think it's, I think, you know, to, to be honest, I think it is inclusive of all the, to have a better idea of all the town lands, how all of that stuff works better. I, I, I like that. Let's do a workshop.
So maybe you and I and Eric can talk about that at our next planning meeting and try and come up with a date and get people to.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Key players, not, not fifty people in the room.
Yeah, there was, there was one other, uh, point that's kind of maybe in here somewhere. Uh, basically by adding something to the kiosk to bring some awareness to the public as to why we're mowing the way we are and what the values that we're, we're striving for. I mean, that's a good resource. It's a good educational resource and.
I, uh, I just introduced the Trails Committee to QR codes. So, you know, when you, when you, that way you can scan the code with your phone and you can follow the trail and how it goes. Something like that, you know what I mean, to be able to, to, to have a video or something like that, you know, something right away. But I think you're right, communication, you know.
A- and Andy, I'm just curious if, if there's been conversations to still continue with, because I think part of this would be that pollinator garden, that, that educational piece. Are you guys still talking about that? As an endeavor as well?
Yeah, I think it's still something we'd like to do.
Yeah.
Um, it, it's a whole nother animal because you have to have volunteers to maintain it and all the rest. I mean, the field, aside from the mowing, kind of maintains itself.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Oh, Eric, I'm sorry.
That's okay to be sorry.
I was, I was yappy.
From Canada.
Uh, I want to say that, that, um, we have been able to implement this plan fairly effectively over the past three years and we have cut, uh, in the, in the fall, uh, the mid to late fall. And so that's been, I think it's a good plan to have in place. I do like the idea of having it be more, um, more universally applicable because, um, we typically are doing all of this mowing at the same time anyway, for the fairgrounds, for the, um, the landfill, the area by the beach. Uh, I know there are other small grass areas, but I think that, um, the, the, as far as acreage goes, that we have some, you know, some significant areas that, that would benefit from this type of management as well. Um, and so, um, I think it's been, it's been very good. Everybody's been very cooperative. I enjoyed going out and meeting with the, um, the expert you had to talk about pollinators. Um, and I think that the idea of a two-year cycle, um, actually makes a ton of sense because it, it does help, um, do all the things that you're looking for with the wood growth management, but it, it preserves the habit, but it also cuts our maintenance needs in half. Potentially. So, so that's another.
Bottom line, Eric.
I'm excited to, to work on this and, uh, I think that, um, uh, I appreciate you guys bringing this forward.
So we'll be mowing the ball field every other year.
Every other year.
This is just the long, we can ground off.
All right, the ball field, that's right. It'll really be like.
More frequently because we'll have more staff time to get it.
Field of dreams. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it for everyone. Thank you very much, uh, for that. Friends, we're going to do, uh, a U-turn. We're going to go back up to item twenty-three zero forty-nine, which is to consider the appointment of Christine Sammons to the Budget Committee. Uh, Christine Sammons, uh, it's in your, uh, packet. It's page twenty-three. Uh, page twenty-three, Christine Sammons, who, uh, is a former member of, uh, the Select Board. Uh, just some background on this information. Christina is, uh, being appointed in, uh, the position to replace Rebecca Lambert, who, uh, was also elected to the School Board, uh, and has resigned her position on the Budget Committee, uh, due to just time, uh, commitment and things like that. Chris, uh, has stepped in. Um, Chris did not have, uh, to be here for this since she has already, uh, she's been known to the town, uh, as a select board member. But, uh, anybody have any questions or anything to say about this?
I appreciate she enjoyed her sixteen months off from.
She had a brief respite from, uh, but, you know, I, I told her, I said, she, she's too involved. She's too passionate about, you know, helping her town and she loves Reedfield too much to, to stay out of it. So I think it's a really good match.
It's a nice slide. I've been there in and out of the Budget Committee. It's, it's good. She'll be very valuable. I'll make a motion to appoint Chris Sammons to fill a open position on the Budget Committee beginning tonight and going through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second. It's been moved in seconded to appoint Christine Sammons to the Budget Committee, uh, for a term that will end, uh, in twenty twenty-four. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? All right. Thank you very much, uh, Chris. Uh, we now go to Old Business, which is item, uh, twenty-three zero forty-three. This is from last meeting, uh, which is to discuss and develop select board budget goals. We have about fifteen minutes, um, set aside for this.
So I'd make a motion to be extend the meeting for a further fifteen minutes.
Um, but before you make that, we also need to do the transfer station fee schedule and auditor recommendations on reserve accounting, which are five minutes each. So.
I would do a half hour.
And let's try and do that the last time.
Do that, do that now. Will you move that?
It's fine. Well, I would like to make a motion, we extend the meeting for thirty minutes?
Second that, uh, it's been moved in seconded, all in favor for thirty more minutes? Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Um, excellent, yes. Um, the, these are.
Before going, I just want to know, is it possible to make a motion where we say, but if we can get done earlier, we will try?
No, absolutely. That's.
Okay, I just want to know if that's a thing.
That's implicit in the motion.
Okay, I was not always clear.
I need to fill in this and I don't know what goes in the blanks, so I need to know.
Okay.
Um, excellent. So this is the portion where we talked about discuss and develop select board budget goals. Um, these goals, these budget goals are basically things that we're going to include in the June warrant. Uh, and these are from us, from people that we have talked about, from our goals. Um, I will give you, you know, if, if you have anything, certainly you don't have to. Uh, there's no requirement that we bring anything in. That wasn't, it wasn't like homework. Um, but, but I, I know that, that Catherine had some, um, I know, but it wasn't. It wasn't, you know what I mean? Uh, Catherine had some. I have one that I'd like to discuss, but if anybody else has any budget goals or anything like that, we'd love to get started. Sean, why don't you kick us off?
Oh, oh, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Well, as, I think I go back to the, the retreat with my thoughts and just in terms of, um, increasing, uh, revenue streams, I guess, for the beach area and some of the recreation thoughts is just what could we do, um, for, for the beach coming up in terms of expansion of services, whether it's some sort of bending, some sort of restructuring of the space? I, I, I just think there's a lot of value in that property in the town and I think it's a very well utilized space. Um, and I just think, you know, it'd be nice to grab a soda, maybe you're down there or, or an ice cream. And, and, and I think it's something that would pay for itself pretty quickly. Um, I think, you know, I mean, I'm not a statistician or anything, but I feel like the money coming in and going out will work out pretty well there. But I would just like us to find that initial, um, outlay. So, um, something I've been, uh, I'd like to look at as part of our budget goals. And obviously docks. I mean, I just feel like docks.
Yeah, I think just in general, things that will not pay for themselves.
No.
But are also useful, like, and like the, the swings and.
Yeah, it's really.
What, what do you call those things with the?
The palapas.
With the what'ses?
The palapas.
Uh, who calls them a palapa?
Well, I think that's what they're called. They're like the little tiny little shelter, a palapa.
Really now? Okay.
I'm like tiny little shelter over table.
Anyway, I, I think we need to look at all of those kind of physical, um, equipment things down there and see and prioritize what maybe should come this year and what maybe next year and set up a three or four year plan for replacing some of that stuff.
I agree.
Yeah, I think, you know, we've made it, uh, in the last few years, you know, we've had a very valiant effort to increase people's access to, to the space, um, whether they use palapas or not. And.
They are palapas.
Son of a gun.
Is that, is that a Virginia website? You look that up on? That's what I want to know.
For half hours, all we have, sorry, half hours.
That's my goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. Sorry, didn't mean to palapa on you.
I don't remember what I submitted and I can't get my email on this computer. Um, but whatever was there came in the notes.
Sure.
If you can pull them from the email when you write this.
I'm just trying to work it down the line.
I guess I, since I talked about it earlier, um, a consideration of mileage for if this is an appropriate place to talk about that.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Well, the whole thing, really.
Just the whole thing. The animal control officer.
To take, you know, so I, I talked about it earlier. And the other thing, I, this is like just the opposite of what I just said. Um, but reluctant to spend much that isn't something, um, that we have to, it's just a really tough time for people. So we just proceed with caution.
No, I think that's a, that's an overarching thing we, we all would, would agree with.
But maybe we actually want to state that. Um, and I, I want to be specific about that. I'm not looking for a flat budget. If we spent two million dollars this year, I'm not looking for us to spend two million dollars next year. I would like us to have what we propose in spending to match what we can afford to spend because there's an increase in property value. There are new properties that get developed in town and then that allows us to have greater revenue. And so if that's revenue that's coming in, I think it's fair to spend that because that's not increasing anybody's burden. Um, and so I think it's important that we understand the difference between a flat budget and holding a specific dollar amount.
Yeah, but I think fiscal responsibility is something, especially now we're all on, sort of. Um, Steve, any budget goals that you would like to share? Um, anything specific or?
Definitely, no.
Okay, gotcha.
No, right, yeah, absolutely.
No, but I think it's important, um, like Ralph was saying, that he wants to come to the budget times for the, uh, specific thing he has an interest in, which is really not our meeting. That's really, he needs to be at the Budget Committee meetings when they're talking about those things because then we get in. Because then we get informed from there because we don't discuss most of those things in specifics. And I think if we have a personal interest in something like the beach or the animal control, I think it's important for us to know that we are welcome to go to those Budget Committee meetings, right? And it would just be one, say, to go with the animal control because we know when that's going to be discussed. And so then we can actually have a voice.
Can I, can I just point that out? Just what Catherine is speaking to, and this is for the public as well. The budget discussions are grouped into groups of things that they will be discussing at this meeting, groups of appropriations they will be discussing at this meeting. So what, when we say that, you know, you can find in the schedule, the meeting that then will be discussed, discussing about animal control, we're using that example. You can go to that, that you don't have to go to every single meeting waiting for them to get to it. It, it's, it's actually very well run. And we, every year, we, we beg people to get involved early so that when you come at the end, because you've heard your cousin's brother's uncle told you something in the budget was going to be expensive. And by that time, you don't know what it is. You have no sense of the process. So we, we are making a concerted effort this year as a Select Board to talk about the process, to get people involved. And that's, this is the perfect way to, to begin doing that. Go ahead, Eric.
I don't necessarily have a budget goal. We're going to talk a little bit more about some of the changes I'd like to make to the process for, mostly for auditing and accounting. But I do want to let the board know that I am planning on one ordinance revision, one, one new ordinance, which would be an ordinance for the town beach to address a number of things, one being the change and the many changes we've seen as a result of going from a, basically a private fee-based beach where people paid memberships and attended to a wide open public beach, which brings a unique set of challenges and needs. And I think the idea of capital planning is definitely part of that. But also the, the parking thing we discussed earlier, the use of the beach, a lot of the rules that we have for the beach are, have just been there forever, or they've been tweaked over time. And I think that those being codified and having people vote on them is important because they really never have been before. And one of the things I think is really important is that we are seeing changes to who uses the beach. We're seeing a lot of grandparents and grandparents bringing their kids and, or their grandkids. And, you know, that, that's something where we get revenue from that. But it's also a question of, of use and what are we trying to accomplish by having a public beach? I think that, you know, looking at the fee schedule, looking at how all that fits into our community and our goals. And we've already gotten some good feedback from the, the surveys, the comp plan surveys, that people love the beach. And they really love the idea of, of having it well supported and well funded and utilized. So anyway, I think that's an important piece that I wanted to talk about, that I'll be working on. As always, we will get some updates to the comprehensive plan as they strive to improve that document as they, as they've done every year for, for a long time.
You don't mean the comp plan, you mean the land.
Oh, sorry. But yes, some policy things.
You got it. Catherine, yours have already been submitted. You had some questions or about budget goals or did you?
Yeah, absolutely. Don't remember them, but I can look at them.
All right. I have two. I have two items that I would like to sort of work into being a part of the budget or paying for them, whatever. But the first would certainly be to, to, to spend the, to add, put on the warrant and to put up for legal scrutiny. The, the question on the warrant that would ask to fund the recreation and conservation area at the fairgrounds through private funding and grants. It is not the same as the last thing we voted on. The last thing we voted on was asking for the public to bond five hundred thousand dollars of public money. That is not the case this time. We are asking people to approve the plan that we would find grants and private money for. And that would be the hope for that. So I would like to try to get that on the warrant and, and spend money in order to get that question added. So that's my first one. And the second one I have to tell you, and I know we're running, but it's, it's a good narrative. Facebook is, Facebook is a cesspool of things that don't matter in the world. But one thing that I happened to come across through one of the various pieces of Reedfield Facebook that I am involved in was something that I found was very, very interesting, and I wanted to bring it up as a possible budget item. It was from a, a person in Reedfield who was disabled. And it was a mention of a path at the beach or a specific set aside ADA compliant pathway that someone with a walker or someone with a wheelchair would be able to go and sit either in those chairs, which are about down by the water, or at least be close enough to the beach. Obviously with the sand, that's difficult, but a, an accessible pathway. And for all of its bad things, I felt like that was something that sort of stuck out to me for Facebook was that was something I saw and I felt like it might be very easy for us to pursue. In all of the beautification and things about that beach, it seems like something like, I can't believe we didn't have that before. And, and I would like to pursue that for, for this year.
Because that is such a swamp.
Plenty of like landmines to, you know, so you, it's, but you know, they, it's just, I think that would be really, I'd like to be able to, to, you know, somehow make that.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent idea. And it does fit really well into the idea of having a master plan for that facility that shows access where dogs might be, where, where the picnic shelters belong and perhaps some of the larger ones.
I love us. Excellent. Well, thank you. That's it for me. If anybody else has any other budget goals, go for it, Carol.
I'm sorry, just a question. So when you were saying the Budget Committee does certain things, I'm looking at the proposed schedule and it just says, ooh, Departments One, Departments Two, Departments Three.
That's how they're, right, exactly right. So Department One is.
It's listed at the bottom.
In agonizing detail at the bottom.
I, I spend many years, that's why it's color coded because Dennis needs color coding, I guess.
Is our email reedfieldname.com or dot org?
Or dot org.
If there's nothing else, we'll move on.
Dennis, just quickly.
Please.
I just, I think I'd like to help you, and I just don't know why I said that out loud to somebody, but I, there's a lot of great grants available under DEIA right now for accessibility for those lands. And I talk about them a lot, so I.
I think it'd be great to pursue that. So thank you.
I just want to remind us though, we, we didn't want it to be totally no town funds because we want to be able to possibly use ARPA funds.
Well, that's, that's, you're talking about the fairgrounds.
Now we're going back to the fairgrounds.
Well, on anything.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
On anything that we're writing. We want to make sure that we, I, I mean, you can distinguish between raising tax dollars to fund versus using town dollars.
Yeah, right. We would, we wouldn't want it, we don't want there to be a, a tax burden levied by that activity, right? That's what we're saying. We don't want any.
We were talking more going the fundraising.
Right, exactly right.
To donate.
Fundraising and private, private donations.
And the, help me with the, the ARPA money and understanding that, like, that's not considered to be part of the budget process, how we spend that money or?
It, it can be.
We would budget as a revenue and an expense. And we, we, we have, I'm not sure if we've got that second tranche yet or not, but we, we do have, I think somewhere eighty, forty, five thousand dollars remaining that can be applied for projects. I think that, that the original discussion was that it would be all applied to the, to the fairgrounds park project. And, but if, if there's a desire to look at other recreational facilities, that's an option, always an option. How you want to allocate things is a big part of that discussion. We do have some healthy reserves around, and that's something we can talk about with a different agenda item.
What are the parameters for spending the ARPA money? What, what can it be spent?
Any governmental function.
Any governmental function.
That's the current rule.
Yes, yes.
But those rules have changed.
Thousands of times.
Yeah, when we started this process, it was limited to only broadband and infrastructure projects like water and sewer, which have no relevance to our community in, in most cases. The broadband certainly did, but that was a whole nother thing. But because the rules were changed, we, anything up to ten or eleven million dollars in allocation could be used for any governmental purpose, as long as it's something that your government typically would, would endeavor to do.
So I just, I still want to be thinking about the possibility of using some of that ARPA money for helping folks out in what could be a tough winter, things like that. I want to make sure that we consider that as well.
Excellent.
I don't know if we can use those for this winter.
That, that's, that's, I don't know either. I, I definitely would admit to not understanding the parameters for ARPA, but I want to understand it.
It's generally wide open. I mean, really, that's the simplest way to put it. It's anything you want to spend it on.
Generally wide open. If we have no more goal budget info, I want to get to our fee schedule for the transfer station. This is a update, I think, I think how many years ago this was. But let's go ahead and talk back.
It's been what, five or six years? So six years.
Oh, you mean since we updated the transfer? I thought you meant since Karen's been waiting to talk to us.
Karen, I didn't realize I, I could have, I could have taken, yes, okay, good. Yeah, you would have thrown the chair.
It's page forty-five.
Yes, page forty-five in your packet, if you can store it home. Just take a look at it. It, it seems reasonable to me. I, I looked over this before. I love the fact that things like bulbs, you know, don't charge for those. Then people just throw them away. You know what I mean? There's the, you, you find that balance of diminishing returns. If you charge for certain things, it's like, well, screw that. You know what I mean? And like certain deals, you just want to be able to, to say, listen, give them to us. We'll figure it out. You don't have dangerous stuff in your house. The paint recycling is a huge service in Reedfield. That is not offered everywhere.
I'll just put in being on the solid waste and recycling committee. Everything we're offering for free is because we don't pay someone else to get rid of them. It's not that we're absorbing a cost on those things. We could do that with things.
Yeah.
Well, we, we have been, the proposal, proposal includes, the revised proposal includes a ten dollar fee to cover that. Because the, the reason they're free is because they contain small amounts of radioactive material.
Oh, wow. That's amazing.
Interestingly.
So do we want those to be free? It says ten dollars on here. It says ten dollars on here.
I see. Got it.
You mean they don't just go in the trash?
I was going to say, you know, they like.
I already have.
You charge them ten dollars for smoke detector.
I didn't know there was a recycling to that.
I wouldn't have known until, if it wasn't for this meeting, I would never have found out that smoke detector could not just go in my trash.
So we need to raise awareness on that. Right. Because I don't think it says on it, like dispose someplace.
Yeah, and perhaps we should.
Does it? That's nice.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah, of course you can make it get up. Sorry about that.
Scold me, Karen.
Okay, um, let's see. Well, with smoke detectors, I mean, they've always, that's, that's the, the way in which they work is they have the small particles, be they smoke detectors or carbon monoxide or however, or however they detect the, the chemicals in there are radioactive. So we don't want those in the, in the waste stream. We can keep those out. But again, as, as Eric said, these are some items that are, we're trying to keep this so that those things that the town is not charged for, there's nothing, there's no need to pass any cost on to any, any customers who come in there. And we've got some really good programs now for the recycling, such as for the bulbs, as an example. I mean, we simply package them all up. We get special containers. We package them all up. We send them to certain companies. And they take care of, of recycling all those because they have mercury in them, the bulbs. So again, some other chemicals. That's part of the reason why we call some things universal waste computers and things like that. TVs even.
And these fees, Karen, can I ask you this? Is it like there, I mean, there's no, the transfer station doesn't carry a profit margin. Right? So it's not like, you know, it's not like these are arbitrary. It's just, this is what it costs us and then we're just, it's just a pass.
This is the, this is what the update fee schedule is. These are the, is we've been passed on higher costs.
And this is the first fee schedule that actually has that explanation contained in it. So I believe we haven't expanded on that before. And, and I think Karen has taken a lot of flak, me and Mike and other people at the station about, why do I have to pay for it, blah, blah, blah. And this is why. Because if you bring this in, like a tire, then there's a company who comes and picks it up and they charge the town for it. And there are certain things that we've all decided everybody produces. And so that's what comes out of your tax dollar. And then there are other things that people produce that's their own choice to produce, more or less, you know, like throwing away a sofa. Everybody doesn't throw away a sofa every year. And so if I'm throwing one away, I need to pay for that. But if I'm throwing away my regular trash, we all have regular trash, so we don't charge for that. It's built in. Is that pretty fair?
That's a pretty good assumption.
I mean, I look at this and I think it all makes really good sense to me. But I, I would say, you know, knowing what is in smoke detectors that, and they are very tiny and very easy to just end up in your trash. And I don't think we should have them in our trash. And I have no idea how many smoke detectors we would collect in a given year and how much it would cost us, but I would like to make that one free.
I think that makes sense.
You know, I think we had maybe twenty-five on average in a year.
Yeah, well, I, I got apologies. I brought in twelve last year, so.
Well, so outside of Eric.
But no, I think that that's, that makes good sense. So I, I, I think that's a great change to, to adjust that. And I will say that all these fees are based on the actual cost of disposal and, and especially the universal or the demolition debris. That's based on an analysis of the cost for transportation, tipping. You know, a prorated share of the overhead for the, for the facilities and the staff and all that. And so this is just capturing the, the real cost of disposing of this stuff in addition to the straight, you know, you know, twenty dollars or thirty dollars a ton that we're paying to send it off to Hatch Hill. So.
Yeah.
Or not Hatch Hill, but Nordwell.
Whatever that fee is, will just get rolled into the whole cost and will get divided up between the three towns. So instead of the individual paying it, we'll all share in that cost. But then we'll probably get them separated. And that's the point.
Which is the point.
Right, we get, yeah, good education.
After we revise this, can you send this to Kelly Hess tonight? Because Wayne publishes their messenger tomorrow.
Oh, their deadline. Their publishing deadlines tomorrow. Yes, that's correct.
Right. So if she has it tomorrow, I told her I would send it to her. But if you're going to revise it, I don't want to send her it with it wrong.
Teeny, tiny little change. Lower right-hand corner under paint, it says household paint.
Yeah. There's a couple typos in there.
That's okay.
I like that. I like the pants specifically.
I'm a little disappointed you noticed that, Carol.
Did anyone find another typo? Because I'd rather send it out without them.
So I, I have a question just while we're on this and we're working hard on this part right now. But after you mentioning the seven hundred dollar fee check that bounced and I'm looking here and I'm like, so that was pretty substantial amount of stuff somebody brought to get to seven hundred dollars.
Two shingles.
A roofing shingles. An out-of-state contractor came in.
Oh, it's out of state.
It's an illegal act, so they will end up paying because that goes to.
Okay, so this is great because now I feel more educated. So this is not a common occurrence that we're needing checks of. I mean, I just feel like if we're gonna, if that's a business, we should change that fee schedule. We should change, we should put something in there about bounce checks or non, non-payment fees or something because, you know.
Or you could do something, I, this is probably not very popular, but anything in excess of seventy-five dollars must be paid for with a card.
I think in there it says in the small print, I think it states two hundred and fifty dollar check was what was listed in there now.
Less than two hundred and fifty.
Up to, up, checks are accepted up to two hundred and fifty, I believe it says in there.
For less than two hundred and fifty.
Which we never had before. And I think that's probably as a result of.
That's, that's why.
The issue we had.
So, yeah, I think that's a good idea because then at least we know we're not getting stiffed for more than that. And it's not really stiffed, but we have to go through collection.
Well, just the process, right?
Right.
Yep.
It's, it's an effort. Time. We've got to pay this guy to do it.
Catherine, if you, if you have other edits, Catherine, you can send them to me instead of pointing out all my errors in public. I'd be happy to handle any edits.
I didn't point out any errors. That was Karen.
Break out the stones. Break out the stones.
We, we did revamp the whole schedule, tried to make it cleaner, more.
No, it's great.
More, more easily readable.
Ninety-nine point nine percent.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
And thank you, Karen.
On this, through everything.
I think the only other thing that I had talked with Karen about that we might want to look at is the propane fees. Um I think Karen said that we just got our, because we've, we've been getting fee increases from vendors every couple of weeks. So we just got a new fee increase from the propane folks. Uh and so I want to have the um, I guess liberty to talk to Karen about what that schedule should be.
Sure, we.
And adjust it and, and be recognizing that it probably won't be more than ten or twenty percent more than what's here now.
Is that the LP gas tanks?
Yes, yep.
So what's a standard?
Thirty.
They're different sizes, thirty, they're twenty pounds. Yeah, or twenty pounds or the little, little one-pound ones that people have for home.
The camp.
We take those as well too. Yeah, the camp stove. Um so we work with a broker for that. You've probably all heard of MRRA, Main Resource Recovery Association. And they're the ones that actually broker out some of those materials, like the propane tanks for us. So um that was just literally a week and a half ago that we got that notice. So we'll have to make sure that what's in there tonight jives with that notice.
Well, maybe they just need to each go up by a dollar.
And it might even be that, or they may, maybe find the way they are. I just want to make sure.
Okay.
I'll send Kelly an email and tell her that it will come by end of day tomorrow.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and I guess what I'd look for is just a consensus from the board that we're okay adjusting that to cover the costs.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we have approved the Reed Field Transfer Station fee schedule as presented, providing that um clerical edits will be made.
It's been moved and seconded uh to approve the updated, yet un-clerically reviewed. Uh fee schedule for the transfer station. Um is there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we are at item twenty-three zero fifty-five, consider a plan for auditor recommended provisions to our capital reserve accounting. Eric, can you do this in three minutes?
I can. Um we had, we had an audit uh that was presented um several months ago. Uh one of the findings was that we had um concerns uh around how we were tracking some of our reserve accounts. Um which Teresa and I have, have met with the auditors and we um have found, I think, what's gonna be a very good path forward. To look at these uh accounts um more analytically. Uh and track them uh not in um Excel, but to use the Trio accounting system that we have. Uh and create special categories of accounts uh for special revenue uh and for reserves. Uh and, and also change how we approach them. Right now, and this goes to the conservative budgeting. Um we have a lot of accounts that just say, well, if there's any money left over at the end of the year, it goes into this reserve account. Um we are looking to do away with that policy universally. Uh and require folks to plan for the expenditures uh and plan for revenue to come from reserves. It might be that, that, that the next year, if they had twenty thousand dollars um uh that went into the general fund. Uh which is where it rightly belongs, and it, it, if from an auditing perspective. Uh they could then request an allocation from that um to, to come back in as an offsetting revenue. Uh and that is a, a, a much cleaner, better way to do it, uh that increases transparency and fiscal responsibility. So we don't just have, I don't like to use the word, but, but slush funds kind of building up over time. Uh one thing that I've observed and, and contributed to is uh a, a, a reserve balance, the town of Reed Field. Um both designated and undesigned that's kind of gone up from around two million to upwards of four million. Uh so we have healthy reserves. Part of that has been, we've been saving for big projects. But a part of that also has been money just kind of, at the end of the year, flowing in uh as revenues into these, into these reserve accounts. Um so we want to make a policy change there. And then on the other side of it, we're gonna control the money going in, but also control the money going out better by um giving a written description. Of what each reserve account is, what its intended purpose is, how and what it should be used for, uh and be specific about that. So the board has um established this and we've been talking about it for years, but never really been able to, to materialize it. Um and we'd like to do all those things uh sooner rather than later. So what, what's being proposed uh by the auditor and fully supported by Teresa and I. Uh is to restructure those accounts so that they meet the auditing standards that we want. Um uh and implement those changes uh December, January, uh maybe February timeframe. So that we can be prepared for having them be an active part of the budgeting next year, right? So that we're not trying to, at the same time that we have the new fiscal year starting, rush to get all the accounts put together. Um the board does have the ability to um kind of reallocate those um, those funds. Not, not reallocate, re, reassign from an accounting perspective. All the balances will stay the same. Um there might be one or two consolidations, but they're for similar areas. So what's being proposed is uh that the auditor and Teresa and I will be presenting a proposed. Um adjustment uh schedule uh and plan, including some of the draft language for these accounts. At the December select board meeting, uh and then looking for approval to make those uh adjustments in January. So that we can be um getting familiar with them and prepared to do a full transition with the next budget.
Now, I just wanna, I just wanna say, and, and because this is thick, because I haven't, sometimes I'm very.
I dropped a lot, sorry.
No, that's okay. Basically, the, the, if, if, if I can paraphrase. We are being more accountable for, for money, knowing where it's going more specifically. And knowing where it's coming in more specifically by making these changes. So the auditors are telling us that we can be clearer and we can be more transparent this way and we're all for it, right? Is that what you're saying?
That's really it and it helps.
Teresa liked this, right?
We, we, we both like it a lot. I mean, well, Teresa, Teresa's still trying to come around to it, but it's scary because it's a big change. Um we have to create, you know, dozens of new accounts, but it allows us to track expenditures and revenues in a way. That doesn't make our operating budget look wonky as hell, which it does right now. Cause we have, you know, like Carol, you mentioned that three hundred and whatever thousand we're spending on roads, that's gonna be showing up in our budget. Uh and it looks really weird and it makes it hard to think about, well, what money are we actually spending? Um and, and it's, it's um, it's things like that that will be improved.
And the last thing I just wanna, and I just want to make this, everyone knows, right now, you have certain things that you are tracking in a separate spreadsheet. Like just an Excel sheet. So you have that, so, so here's this special Excel sheet outside of Trio, the accounting software. That has to be paid attention to as well.
Exactly, and it's, it's not uncommon, but it's not the best practice and we're heading towards best practice.
Yeah, everything's in one place, okay.
And then there's one other thing that we've talked about, that I think you said we are gonna implement, which is making the transfer station a separate entity. So that all three towns pay into that entity and all three towns and Reed Field spends out of that entity. Cause it's still our transfer station, but right now it's in the Reed Field budget as a whole. So it looks like we're spending, I don't know what our budget is.
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the transfer station, but we're not. We are spending a little over half of that. Fayette is spending about a quarter and Wayne is spending about a quarter. We're getting that money in. And so it looks like we have a bigger expense than we have, so if they take that out and make it a separate little thing in Trio. Then it, it will be more apparent. So then you'll see Reed Field's expense and Reed Field's income. So we're gonna take it from one side and put it in the other. We're gonna pay ourselves.
I thought about that. The metaphor I use for that is imagine you're out at dinner with six of your friends. The, the way we do it now is everyone pays a, a Reed Field cash and we use our card. And now after this change, we're just gonna, all three, all the towns are gonna get their own card and split up.
Great analogy.
And then, yeah. I have to think in pictures, so um excellent. What else do we need to discuss?
Do we need to authorize you to do that?
Uh oh, I, I was planning on doing it, so if you are accepting of that proposal, we will bring some um real, um solid numbers and accounts. And um death descriptions uh to you in December. Yep, yep.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I will make that motion.
And it is made, made.
Second.
And second, and all in favor. Very well, and gavel, we are done.